Buenos Aires, the Committee on Environment, Revenue Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning is calling this virtual public hearing to order. It is now nine ten AM Thursday, March third, two thousand and twenty-two. Notice of this morning's virtual hearing is provided via email to senators, stakeholders in the local media on February twenty-fourth for the five-day notice and March first for the forty-eight-hour notice, thus meeting the requirements of open government law. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that are here today, Senator Telo Taitegui, Senator Tony Ada, and Senator Chris Duñez, Suzos Masi. The purpose of this virtual public hearing is to receive testimony on the following agenda item for Bill number two four five dash thirty-six LS sponsored by myself, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, an act to amend section five, five, four, B, one oh three, B of chapter fifty-four, B title ten Guam Code annotated relative to extending the effective date of the paperbag ban for the retail and wholesale establishments to January first, two thousand and twenty-three. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until four PM Thursday, March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please address the testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson on the Committee on Environment, Revenue Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning, or it can be dropped off to at the mailboxes at the Guam Congress Building or emailed to office@senatorparas.org. So the rules of conduct for this virtual public hearing are as follows: the host will mute participants until caught upon by the chair; a virtual background should not be utilized; and during this hearing, a participant's face must be visible at all times. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted and that you're speaking into your microphone. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name for record-keeping purposes. The order questioning will begin with the chairperson, followed by my colleagues. And so now to begin our agenda on Bill two four five dash thirty-six LS sponsored by Senator Sabina Flores Perez, an act to amend section fifty-four, B, one oh three, B of chapter fifty-four, B title ten Guam Code annotated relative to extending the effective date of the paperbag ban for the retail and wholesale establishments to January first, two thousand and twenty-three. Notices were sent to the media and stakeholders. There was a fiscal note waiver that was received due to administrative nature, and it states that it poses no fiscal impact on funds of the government of Guam. So we are expecting written testimony to be provided, so I would just like to provide some introductory remarks. And at this, yeah, so at this point, the purpose of Bill two four five dash thirty-six is to extend the deadline for the paperbag ban for retail and wholesale establishments till the end of this year for those that wish to phase out and make use of their existing supplies rather than it going to waste and to provide more time to develop reusable options. To be clear, the intent of Bill two four five dash thirty-six is to continue the policy set forth in Public Law thirty-five dash one thirty that banned the use of disposable carryout plastic bags, which took effect on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. The importance of the paperbag ban, as was stated in the, in the testimony provided by UOG Island for Sustainability, is that the production of paperbags emits more air pollution than that of manufacturing plastic bags and consumes four times as much energy to produce. In addition, paperbags do not degrade much faster than plastic and weigh five to seven times more than plastic bags, resulting in a more mass deposited in landfill and release of greenhouse gases. So at this time, we actually have Ryan Torres from Macy's Guam who is here to provide testimony. So now I'd like to recognize Mr. Torres at this time.
Hafedain, good morning. I'm Ryan Torres, Senior Director, Store Manager from Macy's. I am support of delaying this bill until January first, two thousand and twenty-three. This is very unusual that we'll have a unique situation here in Guam to only provide reusable bags. So unlike any store that we operate, we currently have paper shopping bags, and we hope to continue that for the remaining of the year. It is very costly and takes a lot of time to understand the implications of sourcing, whether it be here locally or off-island, in getting reusable bags just for only Macy's Guam. So we need more time to study and what the effects is with how this impacts our business. So the extra time will allow us to study that, and we do have allocations for our paper shopping bags, and we wish to continue that until the end of the year. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, Mr. Torres, for that testimony. So I'd like to recognize Sabrina Sablon from Guam, PA, who oversees solid waste or is in the Division for Solid Waste, I believe. And so Sabrina, maybe at this point, I know that the law that was passed last year, well, basically, the initial introduction of the bill, three, seven, three, was to ban plastic bags, carryout, disposable carryout plastic bags at the end of last year. And so I think there were some questions, and in addition, when it was modified, there was added on the paperbag ban. So I think this is maybe a good point to talk about the, not only the paperbag ban, but the plastic bag ban, because I think there is a little, you know, there may have been questions that, you know, that have come through Guam, PA. So we want to be clear that we're not affecting the paperbag ban, I'm sorry, we're not affecting the plastic bag ban, but if we can provide more information to the public regarding that and in addition to the paperbag ban. So, so, yeah, I guess the question is, what are the regulations? Or how is EPA enforcing the plastic bag ban? And what kind of guidance can you give in regards to the paperbag ban?
Thank you, Senator, for the opportunity to speak. In regards to the plastic bag ban, the solid waste team does marketplace inspections usually on Tuesdays and Thursdays, along with all our other disposal inspections and complaints. So I think to date, we've seen about five hundred retail markets, pretty much everybody is in compliant. The smaller mom and pop stores were kind of confused or didn't really know, they thought that they could just continue to use the biodegradable type bags, and then we just told them, no, you can't do that at all. There is a little bit of confusion in the restaurant industry, because, like I said, based on the, based on the law, they fall under an exemption, and, but it doesn't stipulate whether, what type of plastic bag they can use, if they can just use the regular single-use or the biodegradables. Most, most everybody has pretty much switched off, but there's, there's no definition. So basically, in the beginning, we told the, the retail, I mean, the restaurant industry, if you only have a small supply left, then just go ahead and finish using that up, but you, you cannot repurchase. So that's where we're at with the plastic bag ban. And then in, in regards to the paperbag, the agency does not oppose the extension of the paperbag.
Okay.
However, I do want to state that making laws like effective, like January first on a holiday, kind of poses a challenge, because people always call at the very last minute. And so, of course, January first, we're always closed, so there's, you know, we can't provide them any guidance, even though we do post the, we post it on our website, we do marketplace inspections, and even with the plastic bag, we took out full-page ads. So I just think that maybe you should just consider changing, pushing back the date, but that's just my personal opinion. I just don't think that you should launch a program on a holiday.
Okay, so, yeah, we're open to suggestions as well, but I would just want to clarify one thing you said. You're saying that, so I just want to be clear, because the law states that carryout, disposable, carryout plastic bags are banned even for food establishments. So that's what the law states.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's no plastic, there should be no plastic carryout bags for food establishments.
The flyer that we put out, Senator, and I can email you a copy after this public health, after this meeting, is because I just don't know how to do things at one time. We put effective July first, two thousand and twenty, paper carryout bags may be distributed only by eating and drinking establishments permitted by the Department of Public Health and Social Services as defined in twenty-six SCAR, section four, four, oh, four, F.
Correct, yeah. I think maybe, maybe I misheard, but I misheard you earlier saying that plastic was allowable.
Okay. Yes, we do, we do say that plastic is allowable, because of, under the twenty-six SCAR, I think, S, four, four, oh, four, I don't have it in front of me, Senator, but I think it's maybe, D, says that if you're permitted by public health. If you're permitted by public health, then if, if you're permitted by public health, then that gives us, the way we interpret that is that they're allowed to use the plastic bags. It's the same thing as like the bake, the bakery products, because they're not prepackaged foods. So when you go into a restaurant, the food is really not prepackaged. Some argue that, oh, you put, they put them in a container, but that definition is, is not really clear.
Okay, because, yeah, the, I think the intent of the law was to ban the disposable carryout plastic bags and allow the paperbags for the eating, the eating and drinking establishments for paper only, not plastic. So we'll, we'll have to take, I guess I could see that's why it's confusing. We're seeing these food establishments still distributing the plastic bags, when I think the intent of the law was really to get rid of it, get rid of the, the plastic bags altogether for, for carryout purposes. So, okay, we would have to take another look at that. Okay, and so, so I guess a question, okay, we definitely need to look at that. Ryan, a question for you. So as far as supplies, you know, the volume that you have, do you, is it possible to phase it out by the end of the year, you think?
It is possible. I do have a question about plastic covering garments, for example, dresses and suits and jackets. I understand that that is allowable under the current law.
Okay, so, yes, it is, that's correct. So in, in GCA, there are a list of items where it is still allowable, and yet you're right. That is one of the items, so a bag used for laundry, dry cleaning. So, yeah, so some of the, the bags that are allowable, I, it's in section fifty-four, B, one or two, and so there is some exemptions there. It includes bags provided to consumers for use in retail or wholesale to package bulk items, such as fruits, vegetables, nuts, grains, candy, meats, poultry, fish. So like when you're going into a grocery store, you're bagging your, your vegetables, I mean, that's, that is allowable. A package used for small hardware items, so I guess when you're shopping inside the store, that's, that's okay, for, particular for those items. Wrapping flowers, potted plants, items where there may be dampness, and like Sabrina was saying earlier, non-prepackaged food items or bakery goods. So that, that is actually exempted. Pharmacies to carry out prescription drugs, bag used for newspapers, bags sold to package multiple, multiple bags for garbage, pet waste or yard waste, a bag used to pack secure, insecure fragile merchandise, merchandise, a bag used to insulate frozen items. So those are, yes, those are some of the exemptions in that section.
Well, thank you for confirming. I just want to make sure that that continues to, that we can protect our dresses and suits, blazers, jackets with a plastic covering bag, as you see today, with dry cleaners.
Okay, so, you're welcome. And I guess I have another question for you, Ryan. So what, if you can maybe divulge, as far as the relationship between Macy's Guam and the parent company, is there specific licensing requirements that you have where that, you know, pertaining to carryout bags?
No.
Okay, so if there's a label on the bag, you're not required to, yeah, do they have control over that, the labeling of the bag itself, the carryout bags?
It needs to be approved by the corporate office that it's branded correctly, as it, we're representing Macy's.
Okay, okay, and, all right, I think that's, that's all my questions for now. Thank you for your, your testimony. So I guess I would open the floor to my colleagues. Senator Taitegui, if you have any questions or comments for the panel here.
Good morning, and thank you, Madam Chair, and I hope you're feeling much better. Welcome back.
Thank you, yes, I am. Good health.
Well, thank you, everyone, for being here this morning, and I especially like to thank Sabrina Sablon for answering a letter that I was sent, that was sent to her on January third, asking about, you know, the, the law, current law regarding plastic bags as well as paper bags. It was very informative. It allowed me to be able to answer some constituents who was, they were confused, like she said earlier, they were a bit confused on the plastics on restaurants especially, and I was able to forward that information to some of the constituents. In fact, just the other day, I went to a restaurant to pick up some food, and they were, they asked the same question, they were unsure whether they can use plastic bags continuing as a restaurant for takeout, and I said, yes, according to EPA, according to the law, you can use it. And he goes, oh, good, because I have a whole bunch I'm still trying to get rid of. So I'm pretty sure a lot of these restaurants want to comply, you know, want to be more green-friendly, and, but they just have, you know, a room full of pre-purchased plastic bags that they still have not been able to get rid of. I mean, it's going to go, all go to the same place, if you think about it. If they get rid of it, they're going to still go to the landfill, exactly where these plastic bags are going in the first place when they pick it up. So it, it just doesn't make sense for them to, you know, not avail themselves or at least finish off what they have in stock, you know. There was a question too, that seemed some, a little bit of an inconsistency, where the, some entities that were allowed to use plastic bags beyond the July first, two thousand and twenty-two, may be prohibited from using paperbags. So it's ironic, yet those that are exempt, that can use plastic, will not be able to use paper. So I'm kind of, maybe I can ask Sabrina that, do you, do you see any inconsistency to that, Sabrina? Like for those businesses that, that are still allowed to use the plastic bags beyond July, July first, two thousand and twenty-two, why would they be exempt from using paper?
Good morning, Senator. Personally, I don't think anybody in our solid waste team has come up with that type of question about why they can continue to use plastic, but there, they cannot use paper. So that's a first to me. Mostly what we deal with every day is the type of bag they can use, it's not either or. I do, we all do tell the restaurants, if they choose to use paperbags, that's up to them. But, yeah, it, it says only by effective July first, because that is your law, but they can continue, I just took the words out of me.
Yeah, continue to use plastic, you know, so it's kind of, it's like inconsistent, you know, with, with that, so that might be, you know, something to look at, you know, if, if there's any amendments made to this legislation, you know, if those who are exempt can also use paper too, then we should allow that to be placed in the, that exemption scenario or clause. Yeah, I appreciate that. You know, why, Sabrina, can you tell me why is it that paperbags were prohibited in the first place? Or I might have gone, well, that might be a question that could last all day long, you know, to talk about that, but, you know, it scratched that. I think we went through that in the thirty-fifth Guam legislature, a lot of explanation, I don't want to hold up the public hearing, but, you know, it's just, makes me wonder why, you know, I, I understand plastics are very difficult, non-biodegradable, it's very difficult. The last question I have, Madam Chair, if I may, Sabrina, I noticed that in, on base, the military base, they're still using plastic bags and groceries. Does that mean that the military is exempt for, or not exempt, but they don't follow any of the Guam EPA laws on Guam?
That's a very good question, because I did, I did question that too, and we did have somebody call in on that, and from the way it was explained to me is that they, they report, DoD reports to the, I guess, the Defense Secretary and not to us, so that law is not applicable to them.
Okay, okay, well, thank you so much for that. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Taitegui. Senator Tony Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sabrina, I just have a question. Would, what, what is the, what is the, I guess, the, the hesitation, or, I'm not sure, perhaps it was just the law that was created with using biodegradable, biodegradable bags, you know, plastic bags?
Are you talking, Senator, about the consumers? What is their hesitation about you saying that?
Yeah, when the law was implemented.
I believe it was the cost, and the same thing with the paperbags, paperbags cost more.
Yeah, you know, because I guess what I'm seeing more out there now is, instead of biodegradable bags being utilized, right, so we have these cloth-type or these plastic line reusable bags, but when you see that in the trash, you know, I mean, which is worse, right, the, the biodegradable bag or that reusable bag that we see in the trash quite often now?
Senator, I can't answer that question at this time, I would have to do further research on that, but I guess maybe the, the cloth-type bags, and I guess that's in the, the definition of the law, I think it, it has more, a longer lifespan, even though you do eventually, the handles eventually rip, or the bags do tear. But I guess we would have to do further research on those types of bags.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, just because of also, you know, everyone's with COVID and everything in, in play, you know, you, you bring a, you bring a reusable bag from home that potentially was, you know, the, the family was infected with COVID, then they take it to the store, then they use that same bag over and over again versus a biodegradable plastic bag or a paper bag. I mean, would, would EPA be opposed to amendments to perhaps allow biodegradable plastic bags to use again, and, and perhaps maybe just eliminating the, the ban on paperbags?
That is not a question I can answer at this time, but about would EPA, are we in support of that? We would have to have a discussion within the agency to formulate our, you know, our opinion on that. And as far as the, speaking of the beginning of COVID, a lot of stores did not allow you to bring your reusable bags, and then when they did allow them, then you had to bag your own bags. But nowadays, it's pretty open. I do know, like I was recently at Payless, and the cashier told me, thank you for having a clean bag, because she said some people bring in their bags and they're really dirty, and she says you could still see like the blood from the meats and everything, and she, she will tell them, I, I'm not going to touch that bag. If you want to use that for your food, then you have to put it in yourself.
And I think that's where more of a health sanitary type, that, you know, could potentially become a greater problem than the biodegradable plastic or, or paper bags. Yeah, and, you know, this, this disparity between the military exchange and commissaries using plastic bag and the, the outside consumers, we can't use plastic bags, I mean, you know, that's, I mean, what do we do, right? I mean, it's.
It becomes your trash bag.
Yeah.
You know, we use them for our trash, to line our trash.
Yeah, that, that's true, so, yeah, I mean, I, I think the, the overall law needs to be revisited and see what we can do to, you know, do both things, right? Accommodate our consumers, because every time you go to the store and you don't have, you know, you, you forget your, your reusable bag, you pay ninety-nine cents for another bag, and so, you know, it just drives up consumer, uh, uh, cost to either buying food or, you know, especially when they only have a couple of products to take out, and they don't have a bag, then they purchase a bag. So, yeah, I think the whole entire law needs to be revisited, and perhaps maybe more amendments need, need to be made to this bill, so hopefully we'll be able to get that through. Thank you, Madam Chair, I don't have any further questions.
All right, thank you, Senator Ada. Yeah, I think if I could just add a little, some conversation to this, yeah, the purpose of, initially, when the plastic bag ban was, was, when it first started, it allowed for biodegradable plastic bags, but then there was a realization that it didn't really biodegrade, it was basically breaking down into microplastics. And so we, we all know that the issue behind microplastics, it, it just ends up in the food chain, it doesn't really break down. And so then there was that next phase where, you know, let's eliminate plastic bags altogether. And the other issue too with just allowing the, the biodegradable plastic bags was that it was very hard to enforce, right, because EPA has a limited enforcement capability to go out to all these establishments and inspect whether a plastic bag is a biodegradable one versus a non-biodegradable one. So it really, it was, it was beyond their enforcement capacity, and so that was the, the thought behind, the, these are the thoughts, considerations behind the plastic bag ban. And, you know, to also point out, many jurisdictions have done it already, and plastic is very difficult, you know, lasts, you know, hundreds of years, and, you know, now we're dealing with the Basel Convention, where we can't, it's very difficult to recycle plastic, you know, we, when we recycle plastic, we actually ship it off to another jurisdiction to, to deal with it. And so it's, it's, it's harder, it's getting harder and harder to ship these plastics, it's not, it's almost cost prohibitive. And I think, you know, the idea behind, you know, we have a limited land space on Guam, you know, we can't continue to accumulate plastics in our environment, and we have to find other solutions, and I think, you know, truly, you know, that there's an environmental ethic, less is more, right? So, you know, they're finding out, finding solutions where we're reducing our ecological impact. So, you know, they're um finding out solu- finding solutions where we're reducing our ecological impact uh as far as reducing our consumption of resources. And so the production of any any product actually out um, the the resources that go into the production of any product outweighs the product itself, right? Whether we're talking about the energy consumption, the water consumption, the the raw material consumption, and all the social and environmental costs associated with that. And so I think that's kind of what led to the paper bag ban too, um, is this idea that less is more. Uh, if we can reduce our consumption of raw uh resources by not using, right? Reducing the, reducing our consumption of of resources. Um, you know, I think that's the the direction, the policies, uh the thought behind these policies. Um, yeah, and I think paper, you know, has a limited lifespan, much more limited lifespan. And so this idea of reducing this disposable plastic, so, you know, plastics last way longer than its use when we when we are considering it as a disposable carryout bag. So, um, you know, the the design ethic, right? There is um this designer William McDonough, and he he was able to produce books from plastic. The idea is that the design of the book, so normally people would like to to have books for such a long time. Why not use a material that's gonna last a long time? And that's how how we repurpose or use plastic. Um, so you want to match the life of that product with the constituents in that product. So, um, you know, this is what, um, you know, hopefully that we can work towards, especially now with climate change and um, you know, we are on the front lines of climate change, the the Pacific Islands, the Arctic. Um, we are at the for- the forefront of climate change, the, you know, the impacts of it. And so, you know, it's it's thinking more holistically. Um, you know, thinking about uh, you know, although we are not the largest producers of of greenhouse gases, uh, you know, what we can contribute is these ideas and the intent. And, yeah, I think, you know, being an island, it's it's it it adds more uh barriers, right? Because things have to be shipped here and, you know, things stay here, you know, the waste stay here, so we can't, it's very difficult to ship things off if we, if, you know, for these items that are, don't, don't break down in our lifetimes. Um, but I do appreciate, you know, you know, the idea with the military too, right? The disparity between the military and the local government. You know, I think it it's a matter of implementation, you know, there's always always a way to to create this dialogue uh with the Department of Defense in regards to implementing, you know, best practices. And um, you know, maybe it's about initiating a conversation with um, you know, there there is an environmental division within Department of Defense. Um, and I I, from my understanding, they have uh environmental um procedures. And uh really, it's about initiating a dialogue to see if they could also, um, you know, harmonize our efforts, their efforts with our efforts in regards to um reducing the ecological impact in regards to banning of plastic, carryout plastic bags. Um, but I do appreciate appreciate this conversation. Um, so thank you, thank you for bringing up those points. Okay, so um Senator Duñez, uh you're recognized at this time.
This is Massey, Madam Chair, and most of the questions I had um were asked and answered. But I I enjoyed your conversation and kind of a reintroduction of what the law, public law was created for. Since we're putting opinion here, I'll just put one on the table as well, although it's for a different time, because there's no bill before us. But uh waste energy, I think, would handle most of these problems, but uh that's a bill for another day. Um, I wanted to ask Sabrina, uh and this is a very sensible solution, I think, right now to extend at the time period, but Sabrina, it it currently is paper a part of the recyclable uh waste stream that that uh that GSWA is is enforcing?
Um, yes, Senator, I believe that uh GSWA uh allows uh paper bags to be thrown in the recyclables, but then again, you know, it's like the pizza boxes, they have to be clean, you know, oil free. So I, I don't have any data on how much they really collect. Um, I do know that uh Mr. Rubbishman, Guam Waste, uh do collect paper and uh cardboard boxes. But uh again, I don't know what type of volume of paper that they accept. But yes, uh the paper bags are recyclable. But I'm sure there's all conditions attached to at what state you can accept them in.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think that uh this timeframe will give us uh an opportunity to uh revisit that as well and see, you know, I I certainly can sympathize with Macy's, um, you know, that's that's a complicated issue for them. And, you know, they're 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 retailing and trying to, you know, comply, but also it 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 could be disruptive as well. So maybe there'll be a solution over this year. Um, you know, in terms of better better enforcement of recycling, particularly when it comes uh to this paper product that I think in in jurisdictions where it makes sense, um, you know, uh it it is something that probably is is still a valuable product or could be anyways. Um, and maybe a waste energy bill will come up. This is Massey, Madam Chair.
This is Massey, Senator Duñez. Uh Senator Tadekui, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you. I I just have a couple of follow-ups uh real quick, Madam Chair. Uh Ryan, um, you mentioned earlier regarding the garments that you have and utilizing the plastics around it to protect it. And if you look at the items of of exemption, you'll notice that on item seven, I believe it is, um, it says a bag used for laundry dry cleaning. Because you're a retail store, is there something, or even Sabrina, you might be able to answer this, would it probably make an amendment to that? Because when you're saying laundry dry cleaning, you're specific to that type of store. Um, and so, uh, do you feel there should be some kind of amendment to the exemption to allow Macy's or any other retail stores for garments for protection? Uh, Ryan, first I'll go to you. Do you think there should be an amendment to make it clear?
I agree.
Okay.
Because our customers are asking to protect their garment before they leave the store. And they use that when they get their clothes cleaned up and they just keep them in the closet, so that stays with the customer for a long time.
Okay, uh Sabrina, would would uh an amendment to that, I mean, was it intended, do you think, that uh to allow that type of protection on garments? Because it's not.
Senator.
Yeah.
Yeah, Senator, I I I don't see how it would hurt if you just want to further clarify.
Okay.
Uh, because like when us, we're we're reading it, we we completely understand what they mean, that that thin plastic to to cover the garment. But maybe other consumers don't don't get it. So yes, if you want to clarify that, then I agree.
Okay, yeah, because it's clear on seven, it says a bag used for laundry and dry cleaning, so you can think, you know, dry cleaning. Okay, so Madam Chair, um, that's just something for the record, um, you know, to clarify that that scenario there. The other one would be, um, uh Sabrina, in this case, for instance, I know y- you you mentioned plastic bags are okay for like uh food commodities that are not pre-wrapped, like apples or vegetables that you're collecting. Everybody gets that plastic bag and puts like the garlic, you know, and onions, things like that. When it comes to meat products, in some jurisdictions, they do this, they actually wrap the meat um in a in paper, uh for instance, even Subway, for instance, but that's not pre-wrapped. That's paper being wrapped. You go to Payless and they're wrapping your sandwiches or they're wrapping their the um steaks in a in a paper slash plastic. Um, is that okay? Because I know you mentioned anything that is not uh non-packaged.
That's the way we interpret, um, Senator, the law, that it's not prepackaged. So if it's not prepackaged, then yes, you are exempt.
Okay.
And that is what we, that's what we tell, uh, you know, all our customers that call in.
And once the banning on paper, you know, bags, it says paper bags, I just want to make it clear, that could mean, that doesn't mean paper wrappings of food. You know how, you know what I'm talking about when when you go to butchers and they wrap it in paper or you go certain delicatessens, they wrap it in paper. That would still be okay.
I would, I would, um, I would agree that it would be okay.
Okay, it talks about plastic, but it doesn't talk about paper. That's my concern. This whole, the the bill is to extend the paper bag usage until July, I mean, January twenty twenty three. And I did take note that you would like to have it scooted up a little bit more, maybe January fifteenth in the middle of the month to allow EPA to answer the questions. I I I heard that one. But Madam Chair, maybe uh we can go in further detail with regards to that kind of paper that's being used to wrap um food products, so uh to incorporate, because we do talk about exempting all pla- uh paper bags. Uh, it could also be paper wrapping, so just food for thought, since we're talking about food and I'm hungry, well, talking about all this grocery stuff, but no, thank you so much, uh EPA for being here. And of course, Ryan, and of course, Lisa, good to see you as well. Thank you for being here and getting a clearer picture of what the law is intended and what it is currently right now. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Senator Tadekui. Uh, maybe just one more, one more question for Sabrina at Guam EPA. So are there any requirements for reusable bags that Guam PA? Uh, to be clear, so for those establishments that are trying to look for a reusable option, are there any requirements um for that reusable option? So does it have to have a label? Does it have to be composed of, you know, uh certain constituents? Are there any requirements for the the constituents of that reusable bag?
I think in the beginning, Senator, when we were going around um doing the market pace inspections, uh, we did tell them that we did need to see, you know, if it was the, I think it's HPDE. H- H- HP number two. Um. Or or it has to specifically say biodegradable. But, you know, we don't, we don't have the 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 uh capacity to test it, so we just take it for face value if it's printed on the bag. Um, but uh at this time, we haven't had any any real issues with that because of the, basically, the plastic bag uh ban with the exception of of all, uh with all these exceptions in the law. So it's not, it hasn't really become an issue.
Okay, so there's no requirements at this time for reusable bags?
I, no, we just, you know, follow what is stated in the law, but um if you are, if you are all considering doing amendment, I think that we should have a further dialogue on what the um, as you mentioned, the intent of the law was totally eliminate plastic bags. And we tell the restaurant establishments that they are are exempt. So I think that we should kind of have that conversation another time, and and if we are going to uh uh continue to allow the restaurants, then I think that we should uh put um or make some definition of what type of plastic bag they're allowed. Because uh as it stands, there there is, there is no guidance on that, so we just sound whatever you have. But mostly, like I said, everybody uses biodegradable.
Okay, but, okay, so, yeah, this is confusing. I can see how this this can get really confusing for for establishments. But for the carryout bags itself, reusable carryout bags, does EPA have any particular requirements?
Uh, Senator, I I believe that it's all defined in in the public law of what type of material it's supposed to be ma- made of. Um, let me pull it up. And that's, that's all in the beginning of the law, that the the type, it it makes a uh definition of what type of material. My pages here. Uh, right there, Senator, on um section fifty four B zero zero two um C, definition C, reusable, it gives you the definition. Reusable carryout bag means a bag specifically designed and manufactured for multiple use and is made of cloth, fiber, or any other machine washable fabric. So that is what we follow.
Okay, okay, so that seems pretty broad. So it's not as strict as the components itself. Okay, um.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, you know what, perhaps, and 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 I see the the confusion and, you know, the the questions that keep coming up. Perhaps maybe a a couple of roundtables with uh, you know, on this entire chapter so that we can get uh clarity and clarification and the retailers and all those that are out there can know exactly what is and isn't allowed and, you know, not this, well, maybe it is or maybe it isn't. So maybe something, uh, you know, a couple of roundtables to, you know, iron out the the details so that, you know, there's no confusion out there and people know exactly what's going on.
Yeah, definitely, uh more education outreach, definitely is important. Uh, I think even a flow chart, maybe does EPA have a flow chart to talk about the um? So, yeah, I think really the the ban was on the carryout plastic bags, except for these items that are listed. There's a couple of exceptions, right, for plastic carryout bags. Um, but altogether, there should be uh no plastic carryout bags, except for those exemptions. So that's the confusion, I think, right? And then.
And I think also, how can we get the military to comply with our local laws? Or, you know, what 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 we can do to work with them to comply with our local laws? I mean, it's just, it's unfortunate that it is what it is, but we need to have them comply with our local laws because they don't have their own landfill within the the military installations. They're utilizing our landfill, so what it it, we we defeat the purpose of having a ban on plastic bags when the military continues to utilizes it and dump it in our in our um landfill. So just some thought, uh, like Senator Tadekui said, food for thought.
No, no, these are very good points. I appreciate that. Okay, so um, yeah, perhaps we can have a roundtable to kind of clarify things. Um, I think, uh, but yeah, just to, just also with the paper bag ban, uh, it's only allowable for eating and food, uh drinking establishments. Um, that's the exemption for that one. Uh, whereas retail and wholesalers, um, the exemption, uh, it's not, they're not exempted. Uh, and again, it goes back to the the, you know, the ethic of more as, uh, less is more. Uh, we're trying to reduce our ecological footprint generally, right? So, uh, thank you to everyone here and for your presence, Sabrina, uh, my colleagues and uh Ryan and Lisa. Thank you for being here, and we look forward to any um comments, questions, testimony. Uh, so um, hearing is now adjourned. Uh, it is now nine fifty seven AM. This is Massey. Have a great day.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Senators.
Oh, thank you, Senator.
Okay.